Time now is four thirty-three, so I'm gonna call the meeting to order. I'm gonna start off with public comment, so we'll reserve to five oh three, thirty minutes for that. Seeing no members of the audience, we'll move on to announcements. Any announcements?
I have none, I don't have any announcements.
Okay, so we will move on to business and financials. Michelle.
Okay, so in your board pack, we sent you the financials. And...
Oh, yep.
So at the end of our last meeting, we have remaining expense of one hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred and forty-nine dollars. We have expensed our main purchase orders this last month, an additional eighty-six thousand, two hundred and eighty-two, leaving the remaining expense at twenty-six thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars. So we have a small amount of additional earnings over investment that was not anticipated. So we're at this time projecting the ending year fund balance to be thirty-four thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars. So you can see the additional expenses this month covered some of the topics that we talked about before. Under the facilities and maintenance, and we also had some additional special ed professional services. And you're gonna see some relief of encumbrances. So this is the time of year when the business office works very closely with all of the schools. And we're looking at the open purchase orders, do these need to be adjusted? Do you still need them? Do you not need them anymore? We also take a look at, so if we had employees who maybe didn't work a day or didn't work all of their hours, we're going in and adjusting them specifically, their remaining number of days that need to be paid. So you're gonna see some here. It's a very time-consuming thing to do. So you're gonna probably see more of these encumbrance adjustments in your next month's financial. Any questions?
So can you remind me, if at the end of the school year, that projected ending unassigned fund balance, what happens with that money? Does it roll over to next year? Can we use it where we want?
So, so you have the opportunity, if you have a significant, usually a significant fund balance at the end of the year, to, as a board, make the determination that, hey, we didn't budget this year to do X project, but we'd really like to do that with our ending year fund balance. You can do that and put in a purchase order prior to the end of the year, knowing that it will be done relatively quickly over the summer. The others are fine with that. Otherwise, if you don't have a large fund balance, this just goes, in effect, back to the town when they do their tax calculation.
And this is an ignorant question, but this does not seem like a large fund balance.
Not at the moment, no.
Okay. All right, I'm just like, in retrospect, like, thirty-four thousand dollars, I'm glad we have a bat, like, I'm glad there's extra, but it's not an extreme amount of extra.
Right.
Okay.
Right. I mean, and again, we may see some small increase or decrease depending upon whether purchase orders need to be done and what we can find as we're looking through all of the encumbrances that we're looking at right now. But the schools will be told, if they have not been told already, that all remaining purchase orders for any items that they need for the remainder of the year should be gotten in within the next week or two.
So you have that by June thirtieth?
Yes.
And also too, I just wanna point out that the fifty-eight thousand for the facilities and maintenance line, we did make a motion to approve that to come out of the trust. And then I see what finance did here is decided that we had that overage, so you put that, you know, in that category. So I just wanna make sure that we're all okay with that, too.
Yeah, we expended the funds with the board's permission, and then you guys at any time can make a motion to reimburse the local budget from the trust fund.
Yep.
And you gave us permission to expend the funds before we did.
Yep, yep, yep. So I don't know how you guys feel about that. I mean, generally with the budgeting, I just like to see a clean budget where we project what we're gonna need, and that's what we ask for, and we stick to that as close as we can.
Yep.
So I think as long as we're transparent and we're saying that we had planned to take that out of the trust, you know, we do have a large fund balance, so if we just wanna go ahead and use that, I think as long as we're transparent about it, like, I'm good with that if you guys are.
Yeah. If we have the balance, put the money back in the trust just in case we need it later on.
Right.
Correct?
Or next year.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Like, whatever we need from the trust, we'll take, but with the balance, why not use the money and keep the money in the trust?
Yeah, 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 I'm totally fine with that. And it does look like we're setting back pretty close to the overage for our budget that will be voted on tomorrow. So that would kind of offset that.
Well, yeah, that was the thing I was looking at the numbers, it was like, that kinda seems very eerily close to
Yeah.
what the budget increase is gonna be.
So it essentially would be no increase from the EECs, school district.
Tax-wise?
Tax-wise.
Yeah, tax-wise, yeah, yeah.
Good input.
Yep.
Good, good point.
So as long as we, you know, I won't be here to make the decision on that thirty-five, but I would just hold on to it and hopefully it grows a little bit.
And you said there's gonna be other encumbrances that are...
That could change that.
Could change, be added?
It could change, yes. So we're working with the schools and under the assumption that all the purchase orders are in that they need, which we all know that there's always emergencies. So, you know, we'll just see changes every month. By the next time we come and meet together, we should have gone through every literal employee to make sure that their payroll encumbrances are where they need to be to that point, anyway.
And then I just had the one question about the special ed professional services for instruction, the ABA expressions, that, I did go back and look before I came here, that is calculated in the new budget for next year.
Yep. It's calculated what?
It's BCBA services. There's a different company doing it next year?
Oh, okay.
So you won't see the ABA expressions, but it's BCBA services?
So that's already been projected, right?
Projected, but, you know, for instance, why we've seen a change this year is because we've had students...
Need, yeah, 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 completely. I just, just circling back to that.
Mm-hmm.
And that amount, is that for, what length of time is that for? Was that for the year?
Which amount?
The thirty-six oh three eight.
For...
Oh, actually, you know what? It's multiple things, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I was seeing it right near the ABA expressions, but it's Stratford Learning, RLC, and so that's...
So that's OT, that's BCBA.
That's everything, yeah, okay, yeah. Sorry, I just answered my own question there, I didn't see those other two line items. Do you guys have any other questions? On the budget? All right, seeing no other questions, we will move on to superintendent update.
I don't have an update for you all. Unless you have any questions for me, we have policies to go over and principals report, but I don't have any updates for the superintendent's update, except for the strategic planning that's coming up, but that's been pushed out. You've seen all those notifications from the superintendent's office, and that's our focus right now.
Okay. Do you guys have any questions? Okay, so we'll move on to approval of minutes. So we have the February tenth public minutes. I have a few changes that I noticed. The unidentified member was Nancy Parker, and where it says another unidentified member, it was Dr. Branding. I have to remember for them to, I think I know who they are, and then they're not seen by the camera.
And they're not introducing themselves.
I think they're saying their name, and I'm not realizing they're not, so, seems to be a theme. So that's all I noticed. Did you guys notice anything else for those?
No.
No? Okay, and then...
Fantastic.
The, it's okay. The January thirteenth non-public minutes, we didn't pass them last time because we just needed a time fix, and so the time fix is, on number three, should read, "Roll call vote to go into non-public session at six thirty-three." And that would make that accurate. So if you have no other changes, I'll make a motion to approve the February tenth public minutes and the January tenth non-public meeting minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Principals report.
Thank you. So our play performance is coming up quickly, the end of the month. The last weekend in March, finding Nemo kids, this is our last plug publicly for that. Kids are excited, they're ready to roll. Our enrollment numbers, as of three-three, have actually changed slightly.
Oh, wow.
We had three students start with us last week.
Wow.
So now we are to sixteen kindergarteners, twenty-one third graders, twelve fourth grade, for a total of one thirteen. March eleventh tomorrow, the in-service day, our staff has a full day planned, but I would like to highlight the morning, we're over at the high school with the rest of the SAU, participating in staff-led, not just East Kingson staff, but staff-led throughout the SAU professional development. And it's just a wonderful day of learning for all of the SAU to get together, so we're excited about that. Summer planning has already begun. We still have a little more to do, but we have another team going to the PLC at Work Conference. Like, we had talked about doing like, two phases of it, so we have a group of four people going to that in June, right after school is finished. Jill Dazir, curriculum director, is in the planning stages of our annual summer institute, and I have one more staff member in the intermediate grade levels that will be trained in the morphology training of OG, so that'll give all of our K through three and special ed and interventionists, all morphology, I'm sorry, all OG-trained with our intermediate staff, all having the comprehensive end of morphology. I wanna thank our PTO for hosting our senior breakfast today. We had a number of senior citizens from our town here for breakfast this morning. It was another wonderful event. We had many apparent volunteers here this morning, and we had our fifth graders that were just such wonderful leaders, giving tours, serving our community members, and once that was over, they actually sat down at the tables with them and had a wonderful conversation. And I had so many of our community members thank me for our fifth graders and for what they provided throughout the morning. So another great session with them. And I also wanna thank Tiffany, this is your last day.
Yeah.
Just, you know, I know I wasn't working here when you were a para, but you've been a para, you've been a parent, you've been a board member.
Yeah.
So on behalf of the staff here and the students, just thank you for all your dedication to the school.
You're welcome, you're welcome. Yep, it's been fun.
Any questions for me?
How many community members came? Just rough...
Fourteen on the registration list.
Okay.
Very nice.
I'm curious, you know, how many came, and is it more than last year?
It was less than last year.
Okay. Just trying to promote some growth.
Yep.
Nice. Brandon, you went through the enrollment numbers so fast.
Yes.
Could you just go through where the three got added? I know one in kindergarten for sixteen.
And one in third grade, and one in fourth grade.
And one in fourth. Oh, nice. Do you guys have any other questions on anything?
The OG training that's gonna happen?
Yep.
For upper elementary?
Yep.
I know that we were working on getting someone actually certified.
Yep.
Is there a person in upper elementary that's going to be certified rather than just trained?
It's going to be, yeah, a one staff member will be certified, but it takes, it's like a two-year process.
Two-year process, okay. So we'll have one for lower and one for upper that are actually certified in OG? Or just one in the building?
There'll be one for the building, yeah.
One for the building, okay.
For the in-service day, did you get to pick your choices for your classes?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, it's a really nice menu.
Staff from, throughout the SAU sign up for something they would like to lead, and then staff have two different sessions they choose from.
Nice. Alrighty. So, do you have anything else on that for Brandon? All right, so we will move on to our chairs reports. So we have superintendent evaluation. Kirsten?
Nothing new.
Nothing new?
We haven't met since our last meeting. I think we're meeting in the next few weeks to start collecting data. So remember, in April, we will be, as a board, reviewing that. You'll be receiving something from me for you to type in and collecting all that data. And so April will be busy for us in that space.
Nice. All right, so we'll move on to policy. So policies for tonight, we have IHAM, Health Education and Exemption from Instruction. This is a review revision due to House Bill thirteen twelve, which requires parent guardian notification regarding specific curricula. Parent and guardian notification is now required for curricula pertaining to sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, and gender expression when these topics are the focus of the unit lesson. Policy IGE is a review and revision, that is, the parental objections to specific course materials, again, due to House Bill one-three-one-two, and it's the same notifications and definitions that I just mentioned in IHAM. Policy EBCD, Emergency Closings, Review Revision, is updated, an updated section on distance education. What was added to meet the criteria of Ed Rule three oh six twenty-two, as well as a section on emergency early release. Policy IC, School Year and School Year Calendar. This is a new policy addressing the school year, school closures, distance education during implement weather in the school calendar. It is aligned with EBCD. The policy incorporates pertinent information from ICA which will be withdrawn to reduce redundancies. This policy also includes a reference to the requirement under RSA two-eight-eight colon four-three, which requires schools to use the state-designated names for certain holidays when developing school calendars. Policy code ACD, Commitment to Religious Neutrality, this is a review revision. The title of this policy has changed from Special Observance Days. This policy states that schools, school employees may not endorse, coerce, prohibit, or prohibit participation in religious activity, and that students may pray and express their religious views in a non-disruptive manner during the school day when not engaged in school activity or instruction. Regarding Special Observance Days, parents, guardians are encouraged to report if students intend to be absent on a religious holiday through the typical reporting process. Policy code IMDA, Pledge of Allegiance, this is a review or revision. Pretty self-explanatory if you saw that one, it was just like one line before, so now it's a little more verbiage. Policy ACAC, Prohibitions of Sexual Harassment Policy and Grievance Procedure, this is a review revision. It was a change in title, in addition of clarifying definitions. So the policies for withdrawal are ACDR, Special Observance Days, the list. Instead of a Special Observance Days list, a multicultural calendar will be created. This resource will be separate from the school district calendars. Policy IKF, Graduation Requirements, and Policy ILBAA, Demonstration of Mastery of Required Competencies. So these are to be withdrawn from elementary schools because they don't pertain to us. Do you guys have any questions on any of these?
Did you talk about IMDA?
IMDA.
ACD.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Yeah, I don't think you talked about that. It's on the agenda, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah, me too.
I think ACB.
EBCD, Commitment to Religious Neutrality?
Yep, I got that one.
Yeah.
Oh, you did mention that one?
I did.
Oh, sorry.
Yep, I did, yeah, yep. Yeah, I mean, so I didn't get to go to the policy meeting. It was my son's thirteenth birthday and his last basketball game, and that all ran late, so by the time I got home and would have logged on, it mostly would have been over. So I just felt like there were some pretty big changes in here, so I went through everything pretty well today. There were a few things that I noticed that I just wanted to point out. One of them was in policy IHAM and IGE, and it says, one of the ways that you can notify parents of this type of content is through the website or social media. So that's like on there. And so I didn't know, I mean, obviously here, we think of like, what would we typically be seeing this used for? And, you know, obviously, I guess we have a policy, but I think parents would be notified via email or like sent home letter here. So I didn't know what you guys thought about that.
So when it says, social media or website, notifying parents is having the syllabus for the middle and the high school on the website and having the parents send off that they reviewed it, that's considered a notice of the content or stuff that would be covered.
Yeah.
And the parents, high schools do do social media and Parents' Guide, and they really do a lot of communication through that. So that's why we wanted to keep those pieces in. This policy really pertains a lot more to the older...
Yeah.
Right.
And course selection, topics that might be covered in some of the courses.
Yeah, so I mean, technically, you know, they try to keep it the same policy, but it's just one thing I just wanted to note. I mean, I'm thinking of like, you know, the top, fifth grade talk that is done with the school nurse, you know, that would be a letter sent home or an email, that wouldn't be like a social media post or like a...
Right.
I feel like some of the stuff that we do that warrants a letter home is done through communication through a letter at home.
Yes.
Yeah, we just, we just did the puberty lesson last week.
Yeah.
Parents are notified before February break.
Yeah, yeah, which is great, and I assume that's what we're still doing here. So I really appreciate the notification and just getting my questions answered when I was here and had kids here. But I just wanted to at least point that out there, that the state, I don't think, really gives like a guideline as far as like what type of notification a parent should receive, other than that they should be notified.
Yep.
So just thought I'd put that out there. Yeah, so, and then the other thing that I wanted to mention is just the ACD, Commitment to Religious Neutrality, is definitely a little bit different. They're trying to get away from like having lists that need to be updated like every year or two. Like, so ACDR, the one that we'd be removing, it has Rosh Hashanah, Yom Kippur, Hanukkah, and Ramadan, Passover. But those are like on specific dates, and that changes with calendar year. So basically, you know, I would reach out to Arlen tomorrow, just make sure like that you're gonna have these same religious observance stays on that multicultural calendar because the work for these, it's mentioned in this pack that they're gonna like meet with students to get these dates, but this has already been done. This was done a couple years ago with Andres and David Ryan, so we already kinda know the dates, just making sure that these get ported over into that calendar.
Doesn't the district do our calendars, too? We have our own, we have our own school calendar that we do, and then the district does their calendar, and so that would automatically happen, no?
This will be a separate calendar. So right now, it's just a policy like on our website that, you know, we would have to keep updating, so now it will just be a running calendar online that you, it would be separate from the school calendar.
Then the one we print out or send home or the PDF and...
Yeah.
And so that just gets posted on the website?
Yeah.
I guess that's where I'm getting confused. Like, you say "we," and so who's "we"? And then, secondly, if it's just a calendar and it's not the one that's going home with the kids or whatever, where is that being housed so that the communication is done effectively?
So, I was not at that meeting, but I know, I think Arlen would be the one that would be creating this.
Okay.
So I would assume it would be like a separate link on the SAU sixteen website.
Yeah, and I think the difference is really, I think there was some laws that changed about school districts not allow, not supposed to have these on, a list of these on their official calendar.
Okay.
So that's why we took out that we're not keep, we're not maintaining a list of religious holidays, but that we'll work with students to avoid it. And what this really came out of a couple years ago, in the work with Andres, were students at the high school that had a religious holiday and a day there was a test. So it's like, I, why am I being punished for being Jewish when, like, this is, I take this Friday off, where it was holiday, so the students came and asked the high school to come up, keep a list of holidays, hand it out to the teachers, so the teachers...
Just to be, to be...
Yeah, inclusive and don't schedule big events on that. So that's where it came about. It got a little sticky up with the legislature and not wanting schools to focus on all that. So that's really where this sort of, we're just gonna be neutral, and that we'll have, we will make sure our educators know all the religious holidays that their students could be experiencing, but we're not gonna put it on our official SAU six calendar and have to relist it every year.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, but they'll still be recognized, and then in this policy, I think what she's saying is accurate, and I think, too, there's another view of that, this is just more for religious expression and First Amendment, so the policy sort of shifted. And then we got away from having to have like...
An actual list.
Because remember, the bottom of the SAU calendar, the official, so you can't list it all possible religious holidays and dates?
Right, we don't have to...
Oh, I don't remember.
We don't have to do that anymore? And then also there was laws around what the holidays could be called, and it's just, it just, you know, it's just, we'll just take it off the bottom of our calendar and keep it in-house.
I do think there's some value in sharing those dates with the educators so that they can be aware of what's happening.
Yeah, that would be done at the building level.
I mean, if a kid is like fasting, like can't play in a game, they shouldn't have that held against them for the next game because they're not up to playing, you know? So, and I do like that they did keep in the ACD, the district will make efforts to avoid scheduling school-sponsored events, athletic contests, dances, open house, etc., during non-secular holidays, so you have the holidays that would be listed, you know, try to be cognizant, that was different. Yeah, yeah, so...
And then ACAC is just, we're reverting back to our previous tab online policy because of the change in the federal laws. So that's just, that's the policy we used to have.
Yeah.
That we updated, now we're going back to the policy, you've seen it before, regarding back to that.
Thank you for adding those additional details. All right, so if there are no other questions on any of the policies, I guess we'll move on? You good, Paul?
Yeah.
Yeah? Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve policy IHAM, IGE, EBCD, IC, ACD, IMDA, ACAC, and to remove policies ACDR, ICA, IKF, and ILBAA. Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so the other thing that I just wanted to mention for that is, we have, the next policy meeting is Thursday, the twentieth of March, from six to seven-thirty at the SAU sixteen conference room. So I thought of this two ways, either one of you, if you wanted to take it, you could, or we could have Renee reach out to whoever gets put on the board tomorrow and see if the new person wants to take this, too.
Yeah, however you guys wanna do it, if you wanna have the new person be elected, you guys look at committees and decide who's doing what, if someone wants to step in. Even if you come on the twentieth, doesn't mean you're on policy forever.
Yeah, because then you'll restructure.
Yeah, I do have a committee meeting on the twentieth, I believe it's in the morning, though.
Do you? And this...
I could do, too, if maybe.
You can zoom into this, too.
Yep.
Okay.
This is a Zoom one.
Or you can go in person.
Yeah, I think we'll probably, my recommendation might, would be to wait until we see who gets voted on.
And have Renee reach out to the new person and see...
What time is the meeting?
Six o'clock.
And it, I mean, most, I say, most people zoom in, most board members do in the last couple times.
There's usually like maybe two or three there, and probably three or four, maybe five online.
Sure, we can figure that out between meetings.
Yeah. I just, I guess, forward that information to Paul and I, please? Like, the Zoom links and all that kinda stuff?
Okay.
Paul and I will figure out what that looks like and sounds like, but to be perfectly honest, I think, once we know who the third person is that's going to be joining us, I'd like to actually have a conversation about who's doing what and look at our goals and look at what's best fit for our goals, and I just, I wouldn't, I wouldn't like to like place somebody in that space.
Yeah.
Fair enough.
Well, yeah, right, just for the one.
Right, just for the one.
Just to try to get one there, yeah, but then you'll reorganize, I think.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, nice. All right, and then also to the EECs manifest. So I am getting those currently, and so I just wanted to see if one of you two wanted to get those. Just until you reorganize, and then you can, you know, see what everyone wants to do.
You can send them to me.
Send them to Kirsten. Okay, cool. All right, safety and security. Paul?
Yeah, nothing to report there. We haven't met since the fall, but there was a meeting coming... Yeah, nothing to report there, we haven't met since the fall, uh, but there's a meeting coming up, um, as I just mentioned a minute ago, on Thursday, March twentieth, uh, at nine AM. So I will be in attendance for that, and I can jump down to strategic planning committee real quick. Was not able to make the last session, there is a session tonight as well.
Oh, wow.
I'm gonna see if I can get over there for it, or at least maybe dial in.
Okay.
Um, but we do have the strategic planning meetings coming up at the end of the month, uh, twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth. Renee, you, did you say that those were pushed out, because I, was that, okay, was there something else that was pushed out?
No.
Communication was pushed out.
I mean, communication was pushed out, like, yes.
Gotcha, I misunderstood.
We've been pushing out communication about the dates at the end of the month.
So those dates are still?
Yeah, those are still good.
Still standing.
Yep.
And, uh, so more to come following those meetings, which we're looking forward to, so.
Nice, and it's five oh three, so comment is closed. And then Kirsten, uh, SAU sixteen moments.
Yeah, nothing new, we haven't had any meeting, um, at all, like, since that, since our last one, which I reported out on, um, so.
All right, so goal number one. I have really nothing new to report on that, goal number two, Kirsten?
Um, nothing really new, except that we did, in the last principal newsletter, we announced that we were doing our fundraiser at the Community Oven. Um, for the King Fisher Community Park.
Okay.
So that, I think it's April seventh.
Yeah.
Am I got that right? So that's great, so that Monday night, any pizzas that are bought, uh, proceeds go to our fundraising efforts for the community park, um, and so that's great, uh, the teachers have been fabulous in organizing that. Um, the second piece is on March twenty-second at nine AM, I am having, and any other committee member that wants to, I'll be at the library to do like a coffee chat at, answer questions, because. Uh, from our maker space time, there were lots of people who were interested but didn't really understand what it was, and so, uh, the director of the library and, and I, um, organized a date, and so we'll be start. I guess, publicizing that, we'll have that chat, so I, I will be reaching out, probably via Brandon, but to the committee, anyone that wants to come and sit with me and hope, hope that people come and chat, um, we'll be there at the library Saturday morning on the twenty-second at nine AM.
Kirsten, if you, um, I don't know if you're active on social, I don't think you are too much, but, um, on the East Kingston community Facebook page, I was wondering maybe we should put a notice out about the Community Oven fundraiser for that.
Oh, we can, yeah.
I just, I know it's pretty active, I get updates on it every day, so.
We can talk.
Some stuff is not necessarily what I want to see, but.
Is it both locations, do they have one in Hampton?
Hampton and Epping.
And an Epping?
I think it's just the Epping location.
Oh, Epping location only, okay. Nice. Goal number three?
Goal three, uh, I think the only thing to touch upon, Brandon, is probably gonna be the signage.
The sign.
Yes. So we, um. After the last meeting, I think it was, we talked about the, the sign upfront, and, um. We had looked into it a couple years ago, and it's not getting any better, uh, we did have a, a company come out to, to, to take a look and, um. Offer their feedback on kind of our options, uh, fixing it and, um, and painting really isn't an option, uh, some of the wood, uh, on the bottom of the base is, is rotten. So we, um, were, uh, we worked with them to, to get a quote, um, and, um, some, uh, that's what I'm looking for, they give us different options.
Different signs?
To take a look at, but it's, it's, whatever option we choose, it'll be under four thousand dollars to replace the whole sign, and put all new, um. Wood and, um, you know, the base and the cement and all that.
Do you have lights?
Lights? No.
That costs more.
Maybe some solar lights, you know?
Oh, yeah, just something. Yeah, light it up, yeah.
I mean, I think those kinds of things we could probably do on our own.
Okay.
Yeah.
Clamp on a floodlight.
Under four, and then it will still obviously have the same, like, specs mostly, right?
Yeah.
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 Nice, I think that'll look really good, I think people will be happy with that too.
Yep.
Very nice. Yeah, perfect. Okay, um, new business.
I don't have any new business.
Old business. Do we have any reason to go into non-public?
Nope.
No reason to go in non-public. All right. Anything else, you guys, you good? All right, it's time, now it's five oh eight, meeting adjourned.